And we will call it in order. We'll call it, but Bob is not in the meeting right now. I'm expecting that that will be. Additions to the agenda, we have three items under consent agenda, numbers two, three, and four. And we have three items under business, uh, numbers two, three, and four. And number six on personnel, is that it?
Is it?
Okay. If those additions are maintained, motion to adopt agenda.
Someone.
Motion by Gretchen.
Second.
And a second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Uh, number five. Approval recommends from the eighth, two thousand twelve, date of the meeting.
Someone.
Motion by Gretchen to approve.
Second.
And a second from Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Uh, motion to tenacious reports, we have April two thousand twelve trigger report. And April two thousand twelve, we'll look down.
Um, just like prior to the, uh, T V, like color sheet there, uh, just a little bit about the, uh, name of the man, which is our first page down there, your elementary and secondary regular instruction is about six thousand dollars. Part of that is keep polygraph, they reversed together, it's, uh, some Carl Perkins F's coded in there. Uh, on the second page, we need to be vocational, both red and straight there are Carl Perkins, those will be reversed. Uh, the special ed F are consultants, uh, which we, uh, got meeting this year that we didn't have budget for, we're going to be consulting with students, so that's what that is. And then on the last page, you can notice that fiscal other fix, excuse me, fiscal other fixed product programs there. Uh, Julie has, uh, reality of your license and regular working account. She's gone ahead and maybe kind of owes, uh, one of your products, so that's longer indirect. I don't know if that does what I'm doing here.
On the feedback there where you had Carl Perkins and, uh, special ed that was not in the budget consultant, right below it in support services, what's up, five forty-nine there?
Oh, that's in, uh, support services, that, uh, something we're gonna have to recall there with one of our tuition bill students. I'm sorry, just, uh.
I like.
Motion to approve financial reports.
Okay, motion by Dave to approve.
Second.
Second from Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Uh, audit two little bills, the additional April bills and the two thousand twelve bills.
Uh, I had the opportunity to come in this afternoon to review the bills and I did not find anything out of the norm. So I did the recommendation to include the addition of April billing and the main bills.
Okay, motion by Mark, get bills.
Aye.
And second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Consent agenda, we have, uh, four items. One of those, we've discussed.
First, you were just asked for a master contract and then a couple of bar members, uh, giving their letters for text to achieve their contracts. Their contracts, uh, expired June thirty.
One, two, three.
Motion by Gretchen.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Number one on our business, review first reading, revise and default question.
To gain your tax. And, uh, Julie and I, through the, uh, through the budget, um, on one side of the speed, we revised the budget back in December on twelve, one. Probably at the backside, there you will say we had a deficit budget of four hundred and ninety-four thousand, that was our total deficit. Our general fund was deficit by five hundred and eighty. Uh, food service, about eight thousand deficit, community ed deficit by about eight. Capital was positive by sixty-five and debt service was positive by, uh, thirty-six. Flip it over, we made some revisions and basically, uh, uh, we made some positive adjustments. We still have a deficit in our general fund, uh, which stayed money with our utilities, snow rule, uh, the affinity, which is the online college credits and maintenance. Special ed probably helped us to engage because all those do state in the buildings, we made some minor adjustments there. Uh, our total budget now is deficit by three sixteen and our general fund is three eight once and we made some improvements there by about four hundred thousand. Uh, food service is now positive, community ed is positive by about five hundred. Uh, capital positive by fourteen and our debt service by forty-seven. Uh, so if you look down the volume, we've got our audited fund downs on June thirtieth of eleven. Uh, our general fund was eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, uh, it's gonna be a little over five hundred thousand. And of course, this is kind of the worst case scenario when we expand everything in our budget. Uh, food service estimated under four thousand, positive budget, community ed eighty-eight, capital two ninety-seven, and then debt service at two thirty. We will continue to look at this in the next couple of weeks and I'll bring this back at the next meeting and, uh, and ask the board to approve it then. And we'll also have the first reading of the twelve thirteen, which is ready for them as well. So, that's kind of where I would be sitting at, as a pivot.
Should we point out the titles?
Sure.
Third and twelve on the bottom, the balance as a estimated June thirtieth, thirty twelve.
Ooh.
That might be a while before we get there.
That's me. I will, uh, I'll give that corrected, thanks Jeff.
I'll lose one to pointed it up to me, so.
Better on the day.
Okay, anybody have any further comments or questions or suggestions? And I'll come back.
Yeah, I'll come, I'll come back at the June, uh, June twelve meeting.
Yeah, we'll approve it at that point.
Yeah, and then we'll also have first reading of the twelve thirteen, to do that. I'll really better, uh, budget that there's been seven need for next year with the two and two hundred forty, so we're in the process of finishing that up.
All right, um, number one, that's number two on the business, which is to review, set approval of the resolution establishing dates for five and a half days of candidacy.
Um, we are working with elders and then, uh, we've just, we're working with Tom Dees and, uh, he's our election committee, make sure that we even get our, 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 our needs properly, not just about it. They recommend that we threw through resolutions tonight. Uh, the first one basically is just, uh, a resolution, uh, states to your board members, define the dates, and that's July third, first, through August fourteenth. So that's what that first resolution is for. These are all pretty standard teams that we, uh, before the election, we are at the eight, seven, four, so never may we get any.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? And then, uh, all of that.
Okay, um, Dave Kearns?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dave Johnson?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
And Lou?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Number three, we do consider approval of resolution relating to election school board members following school district election.
This resolution basically states that we will have any, uh, school board elections during the general election on November sixth. Pretty much all of it says, one of the processes that's.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Linda?
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion carries. And number four, review and consider approval of resolution relating to increasing the general education rep in the school district and college election there.
This resolution basically stating that, uh, the school district will be having a special election on November sixth for.
So, uh. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Gretchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dave?
Gretchen?
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Okay, number one on personnel, we do consider approval of Krista Anderson, so special ed engaging now, effective June seventh through August twenty-third.
We've got a special meeting scheduled, we'll be, uh, receiving services in St. Malo, it's approximately thirty-four days due in summer, and Krista's three, of course, and our.
So, uh. Motion by Dave. Second. Second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Number two, we do consider approval of pay increase for fitness center staff, effective July first, two thousand twelve.
Uh, fitness center staff, as you recall, uh, remember the twenty-four seven hours will reduce, uh, quite a bit. But that, they have not had raised since two thousand and ten, Matt is recommending, uh, their term at nine fifty, equal to ten dollars, so fifty cent increase. Matt does assure me that his revenue expenditure budget can absorb that cost, so we're gonna rule that, expected, uh, July.
Okay, motion by Gretchen.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Number three, review and consider approval of pay increase for behind the wheel instructors, effective July first, two thousand twelve.
Uh, the last pay increase there was also two thousand and ten and Matt's recommending a dollar, it's currently, uh, twenty, uh, recommending or twenty-one. Uh, two years ago, we came to us, he had mentioned that area school districts have a four by nine head, and he's trying to keep up some of these behind the wheel instructors, so, uh, and once can you remove expenditure budget to absorb that in, uh, better mentally adapt.
So moved, you don't wanna add, I wouldn't do it for fifty one dollars.
Motion by Gretchen.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Number four, review and consider approval of pay increase for adult basic education instructors, effective July first, two thousand twelve.
Uh, this is, uh, power, and that's, uh, the last time she's seen a pay increase was two thousand and eight. She's current at seventeen dollars, and that's her, I mean, eighteen dollars, and I would also recommend approval of that one.
So. Uh, motion by Lou, and a second by Gretchen. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. Number five, review and consider approval of resignation letter for our own staff, effective end of two thousand twelve school year.
And if you recall, uh, we made some other discussions and, uh, we placed a court, U L A, and brought her back at one twenty-nine. Uh, F T E, and, uh, she has decided that, uh, she's gonna go ahead and protect her. Uh, she's been with the district for a lot of years, so we should invest.
Are we gonna consider replacing that?
Well, hey, that finished, thank you. Um, we've had discussions in our admin meeting this morning and, uh, we're not looking at, uh, hosting, I'm gonna fill it from the beginning. Uh, we're gonna add some time to, uh, Diane Corby, uh, Joe Neff, media specialist, is gonna pick up class, um, Natalie Butch is gonna pick up some, so, uh, we're gonna try and cover that from again, so we don't have to, we will save more than we originally thought we would save, so it's good that we'll cover from again and make some adjustments.
When that was still there with people?
Yes.
Recording.
Yeah, we're, it's a little bit, we're recording in the trimesters and there are only one trimester, so I'm not sure how this, uh, work, the recording contact with the, I think it's possible, what they're working about, so. We'll share.
Someone.
Pointy. Good. Uh, motion by Gretchen. Second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing all those papers, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
All say the same, aye? Motion carries. And we're going to pull at number six on the personnel, so we can, and we want to, informational reports, and the first one of those is Gretchen, who can be at the court.
We met Tuesday, May eighth, for our final meeting of the year, and went over the spring program roundup, and we had sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine contact hours and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five students. The summer program review highlights were, this is the last time we'll be handing out the brochures for the summer programs. We'll be joining with the area center to do four brochures per year, and they'll be mailed out to four thousand four hundred households. Um, we've added summer swimming lessons at the hotel, we can still have the annual in the suite. And we're having a different for the element, at the elementary school, the preschool. And as Matt mentioned, at the last meeting, the preschool, we'll be using the same curriculum as K to five.
Just to.
The fitness center, um, all the money is invested back into the equipment, and they've added battle ball. And, and they, they, um, the fitness center has generated since its beginning, six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And the visits are down a bit, so they're investigating how they can improve that. And we spent some time talking about the school, how the school's community education program can help the community with the bypass addition to promote the downtown businesses. And we've talked about a little bit here, um, they're having two movies in the gazebo park this summer. We're also looking at adding another surry bike trail to go downtown, but they want to make sure that it's a safety issue with crossing Highway twenty-three, to make sure that it's safe to do that. So they're gonna watch that traffic. And that's it.
Okay, thanks Gretchen. Uh, what's on the board report? Todd, I want to know, it was a good morning, and Matt, they, uh, it's kind of a normal working, we did have three teachers there that, uh, kind of giving their day-to-day updates, kind of some success, some challenges that they have within the program, so it was good to hear of the teachers. Um, there was some indication on a long-term, um, monitoring planning that holding board and velvety group may be interested in joining the West Central Ed District, so they're gonna look into that, and, uh, I think we're close to, uh, acting on that. Uh, there are a couple of personnel issues, um, I think we, we have, we looked at the budget and they have actually a surplus budget, but there's still a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, um, which is, Douglas talking about how those guys somehow go opposite of us when we're, when we're struggling, they seem to be doing it well. And there was some topics, one, possibly coming back into the district, he thought would happen, but, uh, yeah, but, uh, anything else here?
All done, fine.
Good. Uh, Dave, just required staff.
Well, we met, we met, but we couldn't have a meeting because we didn't have, uh, or, a quorum, we did not have an administrator there. The principals are super, so we still met, we talked for a while, we went through the agenda, but we couldn't make any decisions or anything like that, so we decided to go away. Put everything off until the next one, because there wasn't anything else we could do.
It's September.
And we don't want to do that anymore. Because some of that stuff, some of that stuff has to be done.
Okay, I mean, Steph, uh, Todd, continue your report.
Um, we had a board meeting that day, so neither Dave or I made it to that, but I did touch base with Leah, and they just, it was last meeting of the year, they, they, they're usually there to cut some of the, uh, the, uh, forms and files and getting packets ready for, uh, holding being in service for next year and making sure that, uh, everyone that, uh, is renewing their licenses, up to date, and set them, they have to have their license before they can start teaching. September, so.
Okay. Support staff negotiations, uh, Dave Gretchen.
We have a tentative agreement, isn't that how you say it?
Yes.
That's gonna come next.
Yes, uh, we met last week and, it was on Wednesday, I think we met, and we sat down, Teresa, uh, went through their, their wish list and, uh, came up with an agreement. Uh, since Laura was on vacation, I think it was fair to, she can back in on the difficulty, I had to go, random law, or maybe a commandable thing, but just the dates and the contract, so we will have that at the, at the next board meeting, two-year agreement with support staff group.
Okay. Yeah, then Heather and Todd.
Okay, we met this morning, once we were agenda, uh, we did not have any fundraisers, reminded them about the doghouse news, uh, summer school preparation, uh, we will be doing your battle programs at the elementary, um, Karen Munn will also be doing the E C S E summer school program at the elementary, and we'll be going to, uh, Sock Center, uh, that's typically kids in grades two through eight that go over there for a couple of weeks. And, uh, Lori is also doing the summer boot camp for the, uh, math and communications for those students that have not met their proficiency in the M C As. So those are all of the summer school activities that will be going up. To involve, there's a student principal meeting at your hours over at Sock Center, uh, we discussed board resignation, what they discussed a little bit earlier, uh, summer pain, summer work, Natalie's working with principals, getting that summer list ready, so what rooms are gonna get, uh, some title done, which means they're gonna be painted. Going through that, disciplinary reports, uh, principals do those, those are due July fifteenth, uh, the dugouts, um, Sherbizer and John Ryan, they're from the four dugouts up there, just finished those up last week, very nice, uh, looking into a project that I'm creating as well, but, uh, talk about that. E C S E screening, E C F D and then school readiness reports, all of those are reports that are due on July fifteenth. Uh, information in your packet, the enrollment, uh, we're up three, we have one seventh grader came from Sock Rapids, uh, one seventh grader back from a treatment program, um, we got one tenth grader coming in last year, so we're up three there. Uh, information, or the elders. Uh, visited with Jordy last week and, uh, we do have good numbers now. I still do not have the comparison graphs and all those things yet, but I did get this, so I thought I would share that with the board, but, uh, this is a seven twenty-three, the operating referendum, on the backside of that, you can see the tax impact. Media household is paying about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so that's gonna go up about eighty-one dollars. So, uh, you buy that by twelve to a little less hours a month, that would be. And we've had, we had a request at the last meeting, not the last meeting, a couple of meetings, but we had some bigger numbers in there, so we've got one, and two, and two, some of the commercial properties, so, uh.
Well, that's all homestead property, right?
This is homestead, this is part of the commercial, residential, and then Hags included in there as well.
What about non, what about non-homestead?
Those are not included in the, uh.
Those are.
They don't pay taxes.
You don't get it. On a bond.
You do, you do.
On a, on a bond. Operating referendum, there's that, and then with the bonds.
You mean, uh, building private. You mean apartments and that type of, uh, or.
Yeah.
Building private.
Well, okay, what about homes that are rental homes? I think those, those aren't affected.
I'm not sure I can check with you.
No, maybe maybe I'm not sure about that. I'm not either, that's why the question that I had.
I can, I can ask her, and, uh, you know, with the package, we, we like to go with all three packages, and, uh, one of the questions you had, what do you want that, uh, website operational? So that's what I'll ask the board, um.
Yes, true.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, she's finishing up the graphs and all that, and once we get all this stuff together, we'll, uh, we'll start putting, maybe, uh, new website and press, and so, K S A P on that. And we'll look at that question answered.
Okay, it's a good question, though, and to your point, um, individual property owner needs to make sure that the property's classified correctly too, because they may or may not fall in the category that it's incorrectly classified, which is not our responsibility.
Well, if it's the zoning, that makes the difference, the zoning, if you're in R one or R two.
Right, but I'm saying, it, per the property tax, they, it had the classification that's on the property has to be the correct classification.
Oh, yeah.
And whether the, the owner of the property has the right, I mean, if it's been misclassified and they haven't done anything to get it corrected, you know what I'm saying?
They've all been pretty much corrected in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, they went through that for the last two or three years, trying to get everybody on the same page as far as commercial, R one and R two.
And that's kind of my point, though, is it's, that there may have been some that slipped with the cracks or haven't been, that aren't correctly classified.
But commercial and, commercial is different, though, commercial, always, if you have the apartments, uh, a personal homeownership of a rental is another story. That's two different classifications.
I'm lost, really, with that. And you get, hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have all the, all the graphs, they're getting ready to go for, of course, a little on the website up and running too. Um, the last meeting, your packet, uh, probably saw the paper today, the, uh, Minnesota, I don't know, we'll channel that behind, is the, the N M R, which stands for multiple measurement rating. Uh, basically, this is over there, this is how they're gonna range the schools, and so I just kind of put together a whole review, uh, John, who's our app, or, uh, the guru on this, is, uh, running the track. So she will be here next board meeting and be able to provide you a lot of the detail that I put on this, um, but basically, I just kind of gave you a letter that the state department explained what the multiple measurement system is. Uh, I might add that it went on the U B's website and next week we've got our school. Uh, the elementary is designated as a focus school, uh, reason why we're a focus school is because our elementary receives title funds. Middle school, high school, not title one school, so they're not in there, um, and they got a test score from ten to eleven, so, uh, we will have, and then I also included some definitions, have a key here, term, and then, uh, what that means. So, uh, like I said earlier, we'll have Dawn here at the next board meeting, which is.
There was also the presentation on C organization, the guy that.
Everybody's kind of.
So, if you go to the C webpage, you can, he did a presentation that was to the whole group, and I believe that's on the webpage.
So any school that receives title funds is considered a focus?
I think I already did.
No, it has to do with what is their.
Test scores and if they've made games.
I think that's, of course, it has to do with achievement.
Yeah.
Out of their general testing scores.
And one, I was, I was doing a little research this afternoon, a line, that for, uh, middle school, uh, high schools can be, it's classified as a focus school, we don't, classified as a focus school is if their graduation rate is sixty percent or above. Wow, who graduate at ninety-nine, two point nine, ninety-nine, so that's not an issue for us, obviously, and, uh, maybe some interstate schools have, but, uh, that's. But we'll have a lot more information, and like I said, then we'll put something out, other data, and, uh, press.
Do you know how they, uh, how they score that, and how they.
They have the.
Facts they work in the achievement gap, and what they're looking at.
Yeah, for students compared to either minority or diversity group, considering special.
We don't have a lot of diversity here, we're not gonna have enough kids in.
That's a group, uh, where the stars and rain, that's why.
Each one of the mains, yeah, each one of the mains is worth twenty, twenty-five points, and they calculate it for, so. It's really complicated, it just got released today, so we're still, uh, we'll be administratively, sort of, actually, we're, uh, maybe. Uh, some dates coming up, uh, Friday, twenty-fifth, we get graduation practice at nine o'clock, nine o'clock with Jim. Thursday, Thursday first, the last day for two, Friday the first, and a teacher's birthday. Sunday, we get graduation at two o'clock, nine o'clock with Jim, and, uh, Dave and Gretchen are. And, uh, next board meeting, uh, we have to follow. And then follow.
Good, so, um, anything else? Before we move to close session, we've been doing, under some statute thirteen, D point oh five, separation two B, is actually a continuation to the last meeting. So we will do that and come back in a little bit. Back in session. Here now, there's something that's in the air.
Aye.
Four seconds.
Hi, from Cancel High School, this is BNC TV, your Bulldog News Station.
Good morning, Paintsville, I'm Maggie Gilmore. Alex and Tori couldn't be here today. Welcome to our final broadcast of this school year. We would like to dedicate today's show to the class of two thousand and twelve. We wish you the best of luck as you move forward in the next chapter of your lives. Now to the news, promise held on May fifth, and despite the rain, the event was a huge success. Here are a few highlights of the event. Medical Area High School or Middle School will be receiving all new computers in the computer labs next year. The new machines have already arrived and are starting to be set up. The entire school district will also have public wireless access next, next year. Students and staff are really looking forward to the increased wireless access. Mr. Peepenberg's taxidermy class has been busy creating some incredible works of art this school year. We now go to Mr. P for more about his program and recent projects.
Mr. Peepenberg, you just saw some of the pictures from taxidermy, or you'll see pictures from taxidermy. Uh, we get a wide variety of students in there, we get, this time we have four girls in there, some people are getting their own projects, if they need projects, we help them get projects. And they really put some effort in, they take some pride in their work, uh, things that they get out of it. Uh, some of the young people are into airbrushing, they learn airbrushing techniques, they work hard on it. Uh, by the time they're finished with this, they should be able to do a bird on their own, not have to take it to a taxidermist. They, the things they're gonna learn, all kinds of anatomy, anything comparative anatomy with the human body or anything like that, uh, natural history of, of the bird. If you notice, all these pictures are gonna be in a natural state, they want them to look the way they would in the, in the wild. Other things they get, they are very good at observation skills. They're, I mean, they'll look at other taxidermy works, or birds in the wild right now, and they tell, they can tell what's fake in the, in, let's say, Cabellas, what's a good taxidermy job. They know what's, what's appropriate, what, what it's supposed to look like, that's one of the different things. You saw a picture of the otter before, those boys, they, the first time we ever tried that project in field biology, we did two raccoons, an otter, uh, red fox, and a coyote. And the comparative anatomy was just outrageous. It, it made doing the human body skeleton so easy, I mean, by the time it was all over, it was, it was second nature, because they worked with it so much. They took the animal, they skinned it out, they took the flesh off of it, and then they put it back together, and most of those things were put together to where they would articulate in some manner.
The FFA just returned from their state competition, and Mrs. Utch receives an AIG education award. I have more on this story. I'm here with Mrs. Utch, our FFA teacher. So can you tell us what FFA is and what you guys do?
Um, FFA started in nineteen twenty-eight, and it was known as the Future Farmers of America. And then in nineteen eighty-eight, they switched it to the National FFA Organization, because they realized that not every student was going to be a farmer. They wanted that diversity, so that it would include all students, whether they were going to be a farmer, or going into agriculture, or not to be part of this organization. And so what we do is we're active all year long, we have forty FFA members, and we participate in different events, we do some community service, uh, Adopt the Highway, um, other activities that involve the community. We also, um, participate in different contests, so each kid is encouraged to be on a team, which then they, um, practice for it, compete, and then hopefully make it to state. We do every month a, um, FFA meeting, where we cover different important topics, new business, old business, and then we usually have a recreation event. Uh, last, or last week, we had our FFA barn dance, and so that was a new thing for the first time, and we had a really great turnout, and the kids had fun, we had a DJ there, and it was fun. So we try to have fun, and we also do the fruit sales, and so some of the fundraising that we do also helps with that, and we have the, um, test plot out behind the school that the, we work with the alumni organization on, and that is part of a fundraiser, but also an educational opportunity for our whole school and educating the community and the students.
And I heard that you received a teaching award, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yep, in January, I received the region, outstanding region FFA advisor award, or AIG teacher award. And so, um, every region is, uh, nominates a person, and then you receive this award, so it was a nice honor to get that.
As we look back on the past school year, we have some amazing and exciting events take place. One of the year's highlight was the high school football team's historic season, making it to state for the first time in many decades. I have a look back on the season's great success. So tell us, um, tell us your best moment in this year's football season.
Uh, well, actually, there were about two pretty awesome moments this year, um, one of them was at Eden Valley, when, uh, it was a game before the section championship, and they had won seven straight years in the section, and we had not, um, beat them sixty to, I can't remember the exact, sixty to twenty-four, or something like that. That was a fun game, and then, of course, the bold game, that was a fun one, when all the fans were there and they stormed the field afterwards, so, you know, those were the two top moments, probably.
Okay, and what were some of the highlights in the football season?
Um, I'd say the funnest thing about this year's football season was how everyone came together as a team, as towards the end of the year, it was like a family, and that hasn't happened in cancel football in a long time, so that was fun to see, so that was another real cool thing.
Awesome, and what were some of the team records broken?
Um, we broke the record for most points scored, uh, most rush yards, most offensive categories, um, as a team, we broke. And then we had quite a few individual records too, with Kyle Walters getting the, um, receptions record, and Jason getting the longest catch record.
Okay, and what were some of the ones that you have broken?
Um, I broke pretty much every rushing, scoring, and total yards records, along with the single season passing record.
Nice, and what do you think made the team go to state for the second year?
Um.
Second time in school history.
Yep, well, I think it was a combination of things, but it all came down to really being a team, it was a team effort, and, you know, everyone had each other's back, and that really helped boost us over many teams that probably were more talented, but we had more heart, and we were better working together as a team, so that really helped us.
My top highlight of the season was my first interception at Eden Valley.
Valley sixty to twenty-four.
Beating Bold in the section finals championship game with our state.
Having Max Maher as their football coach.
Watching all the fans storm out on the field, hoping to win the game.
They always say. That was pretty awesome.
Here with Max Maher, our football head coach. So how many years have you been the head coach for Paintsville?
Three years.
Okay, and what do you think made the team break over two dozen of records and advance to state?
Well, we had a lot of kids that worked really hard in the offseason, a lot of really athletic kids, and they're on the same page, working together.
And what were your expectations before the season?
Uh, our expectations were to work as hard as, um, we could throughout the year, and we thought that if we, um, peaked at the right time, we'd be able to compete with any team in the area.
Awesome, and what are your expectations for next season?
Uh, to do the same thing, we expect to work hard again this year, um, improve and play our best football at the end of the year, and hopefully we can compete again with every team in the area.
Awesome, and what was your highlight of the season?
Well, I think, you know, from a standpoint, um, for the kids, just to be able to beat the, um, close town rival Eden Valley in the playoffs, they had won seven, uh, section titles in a row, and we were able to go over there and beat them, and that's one of the highlights.
And if you could go back to the season, what would you change?
Oh, you know, there's not a lot of things I would change, but, um, as the season was over, certainly, we sometimes can dwell a little bit on that last loss, and it would have been nice to win one more and get to the Metrodome and play, but, um, overall, there isn't a lot of things that I would change.
We now go to our elementary reporters for this month's elementary school news.
Hi, my name is Sophie Strand, and we're interviewing Mrs. Bakas. How many years have you taught, and in what grade levels or areas?
Um, I came thirty-nine years ago, however, I had about five years off, I took time off to raise a family, and I had cancer one year. Um, the grade levels, I taught third grade, and when I came back, I went to kindergarten for a couple of years, to first grade, back to third grade, and now I've been in grade four since then, for about sixteen years, I think, in grade four.
Is there a particularly funny moment you will always remember from your teaching career, or maybe a special lesson that you really enjoyed teaching in your classroom?
Um, I think the funniest thing I remember was the first year I was in an annex, um, that was attached to the buildings, and I had a sink and, um, counter in there. And the first day that I went to teach art, I was ready to get a watercolor painting lesson ready, and I went over to the sink, and there was no water. It turns out it was a fake sink, there was no plumbing to my building at all, so I just had the sink and a faucet, but there was no plumbing hooked up, so I had to haul water out there. Um, favorite thing that I've enjoyed doing with the kids probably is reading aloud to them, I love reading books.
Eric Johnson, and I'm here to interview Ms. Sorenson about her retirement. How many years have you taught, and in what grade levels or areas?
Taught thirty-eight years plus two, how many is that, Eric?
Forty.
Great.
Is there a particular, particularly funny moment you will always remember from your teaching career, or maybe a special lesson that you really enjoyed teaching in your classroom?
I think this plaque says it all. I was out in the annex, and the doorknob came off, and I was locked in my room with twenty-six kids, and I couldn't get out of my room. So I had to pound on the wall, and Mrs. Worlinger finally got a hold of me, Mrs. Worlinger finally came and let us out, we were stuck in the room.
The kindergarten classes were recently in an auditorium for their annual kindergarten program. Here are a few highlights from the. Mrs. Varan's the middle school child development class, hosted a group of elementary school students. We now go to Mrs. Varan for more.
Hello, I'm Jean Brandt, and this is the middle school fax program, and we have a one-unit child development, uh, class, and that's what you're going to be seeing. Uh, each of the eighth grade students is partnered with a kindergartner, in this case, it was the multi-age class from the elementary school. And the eighth graders are charged with making a physical activity, a mental activity, and emotional training activity. And so as you catch them on your video, you'll see them trying different, uh, techniques and activities in order to enhance those developments.
The middle school held their spread and play, it was a dark and stormy night last week, our cameras were there to catch the action.
Bill, no, I'm here.
What are you afraid of?
I'm not afraid.
I'll get the tape. Here she is.
The barbed wire is treacherous, there's only one thing to do.
Not police.
We must contact the general.
We've tried, all last night, he wouldn't come through.
There's interference in the spirit world, let's stop him, clear.
This year, fifth grade students walked over to the middle school last week for their orientation. After eating lunch and playing in the gym, they met with Mrs. Flora to talk about next year's transition. That's it for this episode and the season of BNC TV. Remember that you can view this episode and all past episodes, as well as many other district videos, on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/paintsvillestudios. If any of you are interested in being a part of our BNC TV team next school year, please see Mr. Dick Hosen for an application and registration on August seventh and eighth. And I'm Maggie Gilmore, from all of us at BNC TV, thanks for watching, and we'll see you next year. Good luck seniors, and congratulations, make us proud and change the world. Thanks, Mr. Briligame, too, for all of your years of leadership in our district, good luck to you too.
Wisdom to younger kids, be yourself, and, uh, some stories. Okay, in elementary school, I fell off the spider web, don't play on those.
Make as many college credit classes as you can.
Yeah, there you go.
Get the free credits, and, uh, look, uh, start early in col, uh, looking for college and stuff.
Look for opportunities and go for it, otherwise you might regret it.
Enjoy yourself.
Join the school sport, because they're really fun.
Don't ever read too much in reading, or you'll get detention.
Don't procrastinate.
Bring fifty cents to lunch every day. Glad to be done.